Thank you. Welcome everyone here tonight. Couple of announcements. All city offices will be closed this Friday, April 15th, 2022 in observance of Good Friday. Also, there is a notice to the public that a potential quorum of the city commission may attend a public meeting at the Schuler Theater on April 20th from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. with Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez concerning the proposed closure of the Raton Veterans Clinic. Our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 26, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. And we will be holding a city commission workshop at 10:00 a.m. on April 30th, 2022 at the Raton Readiness Facility. If you don't know what that is, that is the old National Guard building. And the address is 33808 U.S. Highway 64. And then the agenda will be posted 72 hours prior as required by the Open Meetings Act. Okay, we've got several proclamations this evening, and we'll go ahead and start with the most important one, and that is the Raton High School Cheer Team Day. Proclamation, Raton High School Cheer Team Day, April 12, 2022. Whereas the Raton High School Cheer Team coached by Christina Coca, Stephanie Ware, and Christina Valdez competed in the Class A 3A NMAA State Spirit Competition on March 18th, and whereas the Raton High School Cheer Team competed against six schools from around the state of New Mexico with routines and game day cheer and cheer with music, and whereas the Raton High School Cheer Team were the two-time returning state champions, bringing home the 3A State Spirit Championship for the third consecutive year, and whereas the Raton High School Cheer Team plays a key role in Raton by promoting community spirit, leadership, sportsmanship, and encourages and supports all teams and individuals to make a commitment to excellence, and whereas the Raton High School Cheer Team must demonstrate a commitment to teamwork, sportsmanship, and discipline, and whereas the Raton High School Cheer Team, team's trip to the 2022 NMAA State Spirit Competition was a great experience for the team, and they received great fan support. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim April 12, 2022 as Raton High School Cheer Team Day in the city of Raton and surrounding communities, and ask the people of our communities to express pride in these young athletes and thank them for a job well done by bringing honor to their schools and communities through their achievements. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2022. Congratulations.
Don't be camera shy here. Drink all good somehow.
I'd like to go with him. Okay, next up, we have a proclamation for Telecommunicators Week, April 10 through 16, 2022. I believe Mr. Giacomo has that one.
Telecommunication, April 10 through 16, 2022. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, require to respond, emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the public, the staff, emergency services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon quality and accuracy of the information obtained by the citizens through telephone, the city of Raton Dispatch Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public service telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities on radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the city of Raton telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, situations of violence, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatch has exhibited compassion, understanding, and profession during the performance of their job in the past years. Therefore, do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through April 16, 2022 as telecommunication week in the city of Raton in the honor of our telecommunicators who diligently and professionally keep their citizens safe. Witness whereas I have, as said, my Neil Sagata has served his hand with the cause of the seal of the city of Raton to see access to a vehicle to 2022, I am James Neil Sagata, Mayor of Raton.
Appreciate your work. Next up, we have proclamation for Autism Awareness Month, April 2022, Mayor Pro Ten.
Is there anyone here to receive it? Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a neurological disorder that interferes with the development of communication and social interaction skills, and whereas one of 44 children born with this, born this year will later be diagnosed as having autism spectrum disorder, and whereas more than 3.5 million Americans are currently living with an ASD diagnosis, making autism the fastest growing developmental disorder, and whereas autism is a lifelong condition and presents challenges to education, employment, housing, and community development, and whereas early intervention, evidence-based practices, and proven support greatly improve the outcomes and reduce the lifelong costs of care of individuals with autism and their families. Now therefore be it resolved that James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim April 2022 as Autism Awareness Month, and commend the many professionals, families, advocates, and volunteers working to promote greater understanding of autism in order to improve the quality of life of those affected by autism. In witness whereof, he has hereunto set his hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2022. James Neil Sagata Jr. No one for early intervention or discourse? Okay.
How many, Commissioner?
I just want to mention that speech-language pathologists and actual therapists are two of the main professionals who work with autism disorder.
Cool, right on. Proclamation, Fair Housing Month, April 2022, Mr. Chavez.
Proclamation, Fair Housing Month. Whereas April of the 22 marks the 54th anniversary of the passing of the Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Fair Housing Act, and whereas the fair and equal housing is a right and guaranteed to all Americans regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, national origin, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas we must as individuals assure equal access to housing for all, for all in our communities, and whereas ongoing education outreach and monitoring are key raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas the New Mexico acknowledges the importance of assuring fair and equal treatment to all citizens, now therefore does Neil Sagata, Mayor of the City of Raton, do by, hereby proclaim locally the month of April 22 as Fair Housing Month, and urge all citizens to participate in appropriate activities to commemorate this event. And witness therefore, James Neil Sagata has set his hand and sealed and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 12th day of April 22. Is there somebody here from the...
Yeah, take it back.
I was gonna give it back.
Thanks, Terry.
At this time, we will take items from citizens present. If you've got something that is related to something during the business part of the agenda, we just ask that you wait until that item comes up. If not, anyone wishing to address the commission right now on something other than an agenda item, we will gladly listen to. Seeing none, we'll move on to the action items. Item 6A, deliberate an act on approval of March 22, 2022, regular meeting minutes. You all have had a chance to look at the draft in our packet. I found nothing wrong with the minutes. I can make a motion to approve. A motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate an act on lodger's tax funding recommendation for Dawson Reunion, September 3 through the 4th, 2022. If you recall, this was postponed from the previous meeting. Pending further information, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, at the last meeting, the commission asked for some clarification on some of the requested items, and we have done a couple of things. So on your desk or in your packet, you should have a publication here. It's from the New Mexico Hospitality Association, and it's entitled, The Lodger's Tax Best Practices Handbook, and it's got some guidance for you in there on the use of lodger's tax. In general, it covers, you know, the entire lodger's tax statute. So things are defined in the statute. I would say that on some particular items, the statute is vague, and it comes down to discretion of the commission. Now, I think that's true until we sit down in front of auditors and they interpret the statute, and they interpret what's a appropriate use of lodger's tax. And so I think with this request, we have sort of a judgment call, and the commission did ask for a review, and I think an opinion. I have reviewed the list with staff. I will refer to the list that you see of itemized things on page two from this request. And Mayor, our recommendation, this is a consensus of staff that has performed the review, would be that most of these items, I think, would be eligible. There are three items that, and in our recommendation to you, we would recommend against. And so there happen to be the last three items, meals for special guests, rooms for special guests, and a deposit for the Elks Lodge. Staff would recommend against approval of those three items, and we would recommend approval of the other items, as we discussed, when it comes to the T-shirts, that's one of the big items in there. There would be a requirement for acknowledgement of exploring Raton or the fact that is supported by this form of funding. I'll ask you any questions, Mayor?
All righty, thank you, Mr. Berry. Yeah, that was, I believe that was the three concerns we had last meeting, as well as the T-shirts, but the T-shirts, I think we cleared up last meeting with the addition of the wording. Yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve all but the last, all expenditures, all but for the last three, the meals for special guests, two rooms for special guests, Elks Lodge, that's roughly $726, $725 out of the $12,578 that they've requested. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, one other thing, we would ask that in, as a part of the motion, that the applicant would file a report back to the city commission with some of the lodging data. We would like to know, you know, how many people attended, maybe where they came from, try to garner some useful information from data if they could, at the conclusion of this, submit a report back to Lodger's Tax Advisory Board and the city commission.
All righty. Any other questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll second that motion.
We need the motion first. Mr. Berry can't make the motion.
Well, damn. I make a motion to approve the Dawson Association.
I have a question for, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. So will that preclude your special guests from being able to attend?
Um, no, we could figure out a way.
To fund that, okay. In that case, I'll second that.
And I don't, we do, I don't know if you guys have a copy of that mailing list. We have over 600 guests that attend from all the states.
Yeah, that's great. So, yeah, and I know at the lodger's tax meeting, you talked about different ways you can start fundraising.
Yeah.
And this is probably a good note to get some of that started.
Yeah, and we already did mail out our newsletters, and on the front of our envelope, we did incorporate wwwexploreratton.com. We're already sent out.
Very good. And this is just, you know, not that we're against any of this at all, it's just, as Mr. Berry addressed, we've got to be able to sit down in front of our auditors and answer why we spent it for this stuff.
Correct. And it's our first time doing all this.
You've done pretty good. You've done pretty good. All righty, any other questions, comments? You have a motion then? Did you get a second? You got the second. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, if you'd like to read it, we can definitely do that. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-18, Support for the Raton VA Clinic. Commissioner Chavez has requested to read this resolution, so we will grant that.
Resolution number 2022-18, the city of Raton's support of the Veterans Outpatient Clinic in Raton, New Mexico. Whereas the Raton Veterans Outpatient Clinic provides primary care and specialty health services, including cardiology, laboratory, pathology services, and more, and whereas the approximately 10,000, 10,300,000 veterans of the United States are diverse group of individuals, including older veterans with diseases associated with aging and disabilities, associated with past wars which require frequent care, and younger veterans with complex conditions related to improved battlefield medical care, and as a group contains a higher percentage of seriously wounded individuals, including complex lifelong physical and mental health care, which differs greatly from the patient mix and cared for by most of the non-VA providers. And over 9,300,000 veterans are enrolled in the healthcare system of the Department of Veteran Affairs, and of this number, 7,100 actually use the healthcare system for all or most of the part of their care, which is an increase of 82% since 2001, showing the massive growing need for care furnished by the VA. And whereas the RAND Corporation examined a decade of research and found that VA-provided care is equal to or better quality than private sector care in all 47 quality care measurements it concluded, conducted as part of an independent assessment comparing VA outpatient care with comparable civilian facilities. And whereas the RAND Corporation's Ready to Serve National Study found that compared to non-VA mental health providers, VA mental health providers were significantly more likely to deliver both culturally competent care, which is important for engaging veterans and increasing access to care, as well as an evidence-based care that yields a clinical, meaningful, significant improvement of post-traumatic stress disorder and major depression. And whereas the Department of Veterans Affairs is better equipped than most non-VA providers to coordinate complex veterans' care and provide continually resources for veterans, an increasing number of veterans are being sent into private sector each year, first pursuant to the Veterans Association Choice and Accountability Act of 2014, and now pursuant to the VA Mission Act of 2018 Public Law. Whereas mental health services, including suicide prevention, are of paramount importance. Whereas according to the bipartisan survey of the Lake Research and Chesapeake Beach Consulting, 80% of veterans polled opposed turning healthcare providers by the, turning healthcare provided by the Department of Veterans Affairs into a system of private sector vouchers that may not adequately cover care and costs. Whereas a veteran of foreign wars survey found that 92% of veterans believe working to fix the VA rather than dismantling it is the best way to improve the care provided to Americans veterans. And whereas one of the top priorities should be the expansion of care for the more than 4,700,000 rural residents by using real rural clinics, VA mobile clinics, and telemedicine under the supervision of each veteran's primary VA doctor. And whereas 144,977 veterans, 8.8% of the total population, according to the 2020 U.S. Census, live in New Mexico, making it the ninth highest concentration of veterans per capita in the U.S. Also, according to the VA recommendation to the ASSET and Infrastructure Review Commission, 51% of New Mexico's veterans live in rural communities encompassed in the VA national average of 32%. Whereas 12.7% of the population in Colfax County are veterans, and statewide, 51% of veterans are over the age 65. Now therefore be it resolved that support for keeping the promise to all U.S. veterans that we will be here for them as they were for us, now therefore be rather resolved the Raton City Commission specifically supports the continued operation of the VA Clinic in Raton, including providing sufficient funding and staffing to provide timely access to the highly quality healthcare that our veterans deserve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chavez. This is quite important to not only just the veterans in our area, but the veterans across the country. You know, time and time again, we turn our backs on them, and right now, we are faced in New Mexico with the possibility of four veterans clinics being shut down. So please, I urge you to contact your congressmen, your senators, your state congressmen, state senators, and tell them this is not something that should happen. We've got to keep these things open for our veterans.
FYI, for, just for the public's information, during the Vietnam War, Raton, Colfax County, was fourth per capita of people serving in Vietnam in the United States. So Colfax County has always been part of the sphere. I'd like you, if you noticed, that the independent writers are here, they're gonna be riding their bikes up and talking at the, at the next meeting we have with Teresa Ledger Fernandez. I encourage everybody in the sound of our voice to, I don't care if you call them three times a day or 10 times a day, but let them know that they need to quit this. In my opinion, this, if they do decide that they're gonna dismantle them, then I would suggest that the VA gives each of the veterans a medical card so that they can go to any one of the metal hospitals or medical facilities, just like our senators and representatives get to do so. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to really acknowledge the work of Desiree in putting this, this resolution together. A lot of, a lot of information, a lot of research, and a lot of work went into that, so thank you, Desiree. And just a reminder, you know, something we talked about earlier, Congresswoman Ledger Fernandez will be in Raton on April 20th. She wants to go to the Schuler Theater specifically to talk about this issue, and I think that if we fill the Schuler Theater with concerned citizens, that will make a, a, a big impression and go a long way to maintaining our VA clinic. Seems like in Raton, we always have to fight for what we have. We just finished up years of fighting to maintain the Southwest Chief, and that will come up again in the future. We're, we're secure for right now, but we're, we always have to do this. And now it's time for the, the community really to rally around this clinic. This is important to the community. I remember in putting it together, a lot of people worked for years to get this clinic constructed, and we had a celebration when, when it was constructed and we opened it. And now we have to fight for it.
I believe Senator Heinrich and at the time Representative Luhon were part of that. Yes, they were.
So I believe, you know, our senators and congresspeople in this state are pretty much for keeping these, they've all expressed that they are, but it helps them go back and present that they have this many constituents and that the people of the areas, and we want to say the people of Raton, really want to keep this, so let's give them that, those statistics, those numbers.
And I would just add that you don't have to be a veteran to go to the Schuler Theater on April 20th. You don't have to be a patient of the clinic, you just have to be concerned about this, and let's see, let's see if we can fill the theater.
Absolutely, because the veterans, they affect every one of our lives, even if we're not in the service. We have the, the lives we have because of our veterans, so they deserve the utmost respect and attention.
Because the time been set is given you on the shore.
1:30.
1:30.
Yeah, get there a little early.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve this. Resolution number 2022-18, Support for Veterans Outpatient Clinic in Raton, New Mexico.
I will second.
Motion to adopt, second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Oppose?
I want to thank the writers again. You guys have always been there for the veterans.
Item D, deliberate an act on event form for Run for the Wall, May 21st, 2022. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, this is an event that we're very familiar with, and our, our staff has reviewed the event and signed off, and our recommendation is to the commission to approve the event. This is one of the most popular events that we have annually in Raton. We've done it for a number of years. Independent writers have worked hard every year to, to maintain this event. You know, we line the streets, and there's nothing else like it. So you do have the recommendation on the attached form for approval from the city of Raton staff.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berry. Any questions? Mr. Berry? Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I saw the insurance form was added. I'll make a motion to approve the event form for Run for the Wall for May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty.
A motion and a second to approve the event. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You have a new...
Thank you, guys. Would you like to say anything?
Would you like to say thank you to the City of Rattone, and everybody's been involved with us as far as helping with donations and fundraisers that we do? And like you guys said, it's a nice, pretty event for these guys when they pass through. And they are coming.
Great, we appreciate all the work you guys do.
Thank you, guys.
Item E, deliberate act on public celebration permit, Blue Dragonfly Brewing, for the High Country Meets Open House rescheduled for April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is a rescheduled event. We have talked about this before. You do have the form for the public celebration permit application. This would ultimately go to the New Mexico Alcoholic Beverage Control, but it does require consideration of the City Commission.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the public celebration permit for Blue Dragonfly. Blue Dragonfly Brewing for the High Country Meets Open House, rescheduled April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the celebration. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, introduction of ordinance establishing formula for emergency water rates. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, you do have items F and G. Both, I'll make some general comments. They're both an introduction of an ordinance that deals with water rates or water and sewer rates. We do have Terry Sykes from the Rattone Water Works here to give you information in regard to this, answer questions. Mayor Protown Schuster and Commissioner Chavis have worked with the Water Board over the last couple of months, I believe, in discussing this, working on this. And the Rattone Water Works Board has forwarded some recommendations to the City Commission. So with that, Mayor, I would call on Mr. Sykes to address F and then in turn G.
Ready?
It is an introduction, which would mean that ultimately we would schedule a public hearing and give the public a chance to come in and respond and at a future meeting and prior to action by the commission.
Mayor Commission, Mr. Berry, good evening. The first item, the emergency water rates, is an ordinance that was adopted in nineteen seventy-eight. It was a sound ordinance, still is, still good practice, the ordinance itself. The fees, the rates are dated, they're forty-four years old. So if, this has never been enacted, it's never been used in the forty-four years. If it were, if a customer today to pay for twenty-five thousand gallons would pay about seventy-five bucks. If we imposed the rate that is written down in the book, that would be twenty-eight dollars. So it's long past due.
For twenty-five thousand gallons?
For twenty-five thousand gallons. So what's been proposed is just a flat three-dollar increase on the base rate in the event of emergency, and adding a dollar to each of the two levels of billing. So we're not doubling or tripling, you know, that bill. It would be, again, this is, if we use six thousand gallons, which is the New Mexico Environment Department standard for households, is six thousand gallons. The bill currently is twenty-eight bucks, twenty-eight, thirty-eight. So even under the emergency rate, it would go to essentially ten bucks more, thirty-seven, thirty-eight. So it's not, we're not harpooning anybody, it's not doubling or tripling the rate, so. And that's basically it on the emergency one. Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So I was comparing this to the ordinance that we already had in place, and the only thing that I noticed was just the word plus was the difference? The numbers, everything else was the same as the one that's online?
That's because that was the actual base rate, it was three dollars.
Okay. And so the plus is just saying that we're adding that on to what's already being paid?
Yeah, to your current bill that's gonna increase that base rate during the event, during the emergency. Three dollars for the base and one dollar for, per thousand for each of the two categories, yeah.
And then, as Mr. Sykes said, we fortunately have not had to implement an emergency situation with our water. Our forefathers were very cognizant of the importance of water and secured the water rights that we need, so.
Absolutely.
We need to make sure everybody understands that this is just emergency at this time.
Yes. It's not your monthly water rate on this particular...
Particular ordinance.
Item, yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Sykes or Mr. Berry? We would need a motion to introduce the ordinance, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Have you guys, since you're on the Water Board? We got a, we got a, oh, yeah.
She already made a motion.
She can, okay, she can do it.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. We don't have a number for it yet, but we will introduce this ordinance, establishing a formula for water rates in the City of Rattone during times of shortage in order to encourage conservation, declaring an emergency amendment ordinance number six-four-four and repelling all ordinances and regulations in conflict therewith. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we have an introduction. Item G, very similar introduction of ordinance establishing rates for water and sewer use. Mr. Sykes?
There are basically two components to this one. It's the monthly water rates, and it's also the connection fee, the tap fees. I'm gonna refer to the tap fees first, which are different from a rate. They're a one-time fee. It's for new connections to the system. And they haven't been addressed or raised in sixteen years. Currently, because of that, we, the cost of our material is barely covered when we make a three-quarter inch tap, and it's not covered when we make larger taps. And when we factor in the actual costs of excavation, installation, and so forth, we're way off the mark. So the Water Board, after much deliberation, came up with a new proposal for new rate, for new tap fees, I beg your pardon. And that's the part of the ordinance that deals with tap fees. Any questions on that part?
I have some questions, actually. So is my understanding that our three-quarter cent tax pays for those taps?
Actually, that's not true. The three-quarter cent tax is to pay for ongoing projects, upgrading systems like our water filter plant and our current project upgrading the Simran system. And that's, those are all for current ratepayers. Tap fees are not ratepayers. They will become ratepayers, but they're not current ratepayers. And so I don't think the spirit of the three-quarter cent tax was really to subsidize new connections to the system.
So has it been used for that in the past, or is it being used for that now?
Well, not specifically targeted. I mean, you know, the equipment that we buy is commonly bought with that, and that's used for that, so you could say that. And same with some of the materials, but it's not dedicated to taps, to new taps.
Right, right.
We had rather lengthy discussion over exactly this. And so this is what we finally agreed to come up with.
Well, I absolutely respect your job on the board. You know, I just have my own questions, and I haven't had a chance to really review it very well. Because everything's going up by a thousand dollars, which seems like a really high jump, even though it has been sixteen years. It just seems like, for the three-quarter inch, that's double for inside city limits. You know, that kind of, especially as we're trying to get some new things going. It just does seem a little bit...
You took two things into consideration in our discussion. And one is that, one, it makes no sense to do this service at a loss.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And so that was, that's a big motivator to make the increase. But then, looking at other communities, our fees, our tap fees are significantly lower. Even if we were to triple them, we'd still be lower than many other communities. As an example, my daughter and son-in-law live in Greeley, Colorado. Their tap fee was over twenty thousand dollars, just under thirty. So around twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand. So I don't think we're gonna inhibit growth coming in because they're gonna be looking at what's going down around the country.
That's true, we're just not really either.
Well, that's true, but, right, but, you know what I mean?
Yeah, my feelings would be, you know, we don't want to just raise the price just because we're not equal with somebody else. You know, I mean, but we don't want to lose money either.
Right.
Right. So we, I think the argument is more that because we are so low, it makes sense to go ahead and at least meet our costs for doing that service.
I agree with that comment, Joe.
It bears noting, too, that a lot of systems charge for plant expansion fees, impact fees, water rights, that's included, and they charge you several thousand dollars for that. And then you pay the entire cost of the installation by a private contractor or a licensed plumber. And this, bear that in mind. We're out there making this installation. No one else in the state does that. It's all on the purchaser to pay the actual rate. You know, even if the city does do it, they're paying the actual cost. And it's pretty significant.
So does the extra thousand dollars that's being added on to all the tap fees, is that covered? Are we...
No, actually, I asked for more. But in the spirit of fair balance, or, you know, the board opted for that number.
One of the things that we talked about then is that since we are already using the city equipment to do this, that therefore it shouldn't be as high as originally was suggested, although we understand what he told us about it. But that's why we read this time.
Those are the questions I had, Mark.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Sykes regarding the taps? I understand there's still more to this ordinance, so. Terry, if you want?
Yeah, the other part is the actual rate increase that the board approved or is proposing, which is a five percent per year. It's based on the crazy increase that we're all facing at the gas bump every day. Our treatment chemicals, we go out for bid on an annual basis. In January, we approved a bid, our chlorine was a twenty-seven percent increase. Our alum was a sixteen percent increase. Those are the two major chemicals that we use. And it's not just chemicals, it's pipe, it's material, it's everything. And what that would mean to the average residential person right now, six thousand gallons using the state's number, would be twenty-eight, thirty-eight for their water and twenty-five, ninety for their sewer. Five percent increase would go from twenty-eight, thirty-eight to twenty-nine, thirty-five. So a dollar more per month for water and virtually the same for sewer. Now, that's just the first year, but it's proportionate in the following years. So again, it's not, that's, we don't believe that's a hardship on folks to pay an extra dollar per month. So that's what the board proposes. It's also included in your packet, I put together thirty of the lowest rates, thirty of the lowest rates in the state. And we're, twenty-nine, we're right in there. But it merits pointing out that all of the, virtually all of those systems, except for Albuquerque, are groundwater systems. And groundwater, you pump it out of the ground and you inject chlorine, and that's your treatment process. Surface water is significantly more involved and therefore more expensive. It's pretty good that we're competitive treating surface water. And of the systems in the state, the, we're ten dollars per month cheaper than the average rate for the whole state on water. So we're holding our own, we're doing pretty well.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
When was the last time we did increase water costs?
We've done it, basically, same program, three years. Last year, we increased last year. And again, it's very minimal, but that's how you avoid saying, I haven't raised my rates for ten years, but now I gotta raise them thirty percent. That's how it works.
And once again, I'll just remind everybody, this is just an introduction. We will be having public hearings, at which time the public is more than welcome to come and voice their concerns or their support. Any other questions for Mr. Sykes or Mr. Berry?
Mayor, I just would add that we will have all of the data available on the website. People can come in and pick it up, or you can go to the City of Rattone website, and we'll have this available there so they can look at that and do the evaluation. And then we'll try to get the word out on hearings on this in the future. So I'm not sure what the date of that will be, but we'll put the word out on that.
All righty. The motion to approve the introduction of ordinance... A second. A motion and a second to introduce the ordinance establishing rates for water and sewer use. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we will get in touch with the dates. Item H, deliberate act on Lake Dorothy lease agreement between City of Rattone and Colorado Division of Wildlife. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in regard to the Lake Dorothy State Wildlife Area, we have a very unusual situation in that that's close to six thousand acres located in Colorado that is owned by the City of Rattone. And for many years, we've had an agreement with State Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and then their predecessor was Division of Wildlife, I believe. And it's similar to Sugarie Canyon State Park lease in a way, but it's, they've been good partners in the management of the Dorothy area over the years. It is different than the State Park in that we, it is a state wildlife area. We're generally talking to people in their wildlife group, that can be game wardens and biologists there. And of course, their primary focus is aimed at the wildlife area, the habitat for all the species, particularly elk. They conduct hunt there, they do stock Lake Dorothy and manage the fishing there. And I guess my conclusion of that is, while it's been a good partnership, over, and the current agreement has ran for twenty years. Over that twenty years... Over that twenty years, we've found that that's pretty restrictive to people that want to enjoy outdoor recreation. And that's, over the past few years, become something of an issue for us. And we've received a lot of comments that people would like to expand the use to year-round hiking and use of mountain bikes and, and other uses in there. And there's been, honestly, a little bit of conflict with the Division of Wildlife or Parks and Wildlife in that time. So, since the lease is coming up on an expiration date, City of Raton staff has formed a committee and has been negotiating with Parks and Wildlife on a new lease. And we did list it on the agenda tonight in anticipation of maybe completing that negotiation and having a lease available for the commission to consider. However, we have not completed that yet. I do not have the updated lease for you. I would expect to get a draft from them and then have our committee work on that. And I would say that we'll finish our work between now and the end of May, but very possibly we'll have that again at the April twenty-sixth meeting. It doesn't mean that the commission will be under any duress to implement that then. We know that there are some things to talk about in this lease. But I'll be getting that to you as soon as we work through our, our committee work. It has been a process of going back and forth. But I can tell you that the committee has expressed the concerns of Raton and expressed that we would have to see some changes in that lease in order to bring it to the City Commission for your consideration. Those of you on the Water Board have also talked about the lease at the Water Board, and we have a parallel process there where we want the review of the Water Board, their input, their recommendation to you before, you know, any final action. So, I'll answer any questions that you have. But that's where we're at tonight. We would ask to postpone this item, and we believe that we would have it back on the agenda April twenty-sixth.
All righty, any questions for Mr. Berry? Anyone wishing to address this? Ms. Fernandez?
I'll make a comment at some point.
Sure, absolutely.
Can I just say something first? I've been contacted by a lot of people, and I just want everyone to know that I think the commission, or at least myself, feel the same way that everyone else does. You know, when access was cut off in July, I think of 2020, and you had to have an active hunting or fishing license, you know, to access the property. I think we were all equally frustrated and, you know, and at least outdoor recreation passports has been kind of, you know, a bug in Mr. Berry. We are over there, and he agrees, he's on our side, too, you know, that we need to be able to at least bike around the way. You know, when we were told we couldn't do that for a competition or a race, that was really frustrating. And then also having hiking access, it's hard. I think because of the state line, you know, Colorado just decided that Lake Dorothy's going to run that way because that's what they did with every single wildlife area in the state. It wasn't they were singling us out. I mean, this is our chance, this lease, to renegotiate that and maybe possibly create a unique system for a fee structure or something because it does hinder the flow of recreation, especially as we try to connect with Fisher's Peak State Park. So, just so everyone knows who's contacted me, I feel the same way that you do. It's frustrating to me not to be able to take my family or to have to pay for all five of us now to go access that, it would be too expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This, ma'am, let's keep it brief.
Yeah, yeah, right. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners, I have been hiking at Lake Dorothy for thirty-five years. I've been waiting twenty years for this lease to come up and end or change its terms, primarily because of mountain biking. I've spoken to City Manager Berry numerous times over the last five or six years in anticipation of this lease ending finally in December, or, yeah, December of this year, and changing it. I will try to keep it short, but to me, as a recreationalist, understanding, again, as I said last meeting, that outdoor recreation has repeatedly been one of the top one or two items for economic development in this community on every one of your surveys. You must keep open access for all at the Lake Dorothy land. And that means hiking, walking, backpacking, camping, horseback riding, and mountain biking all year round. If there's a fee, which there has never been, and as I told City Manager Berry this morning, you're going to be up against people who, like me, have gone up there for thirty-five years without any fee, no parking fee, no access fee. But if there's a fee, it should be no greater than what Colorado residents pay, preferably less, for New Mexico residents, and be reasonable. Commissioner Chatterley mentioned, the last three years, they have restricted all access unless you have a fishing or hunting license from Colorado. Now, in the last eight months, they've added or have a State Wildlife Area pass. Those amounts basically are thirty-seven dollars per person plus a, an eleven-dollar Colorado Wildlife Habitat stamp. So, it's fifty dollars per person to even access the, the land. To me, that's too much after thirty years of not having anything. If there are any restrictions for the wildlife, as Colorado Park and Wildlife indicate, that should only be during hunting season, not during, during the actual hunt, not during the weeks or months preceding for scouting, not during calving season, which I believe they could open up from, you know, February through June to restrict access. As it stands, the State Wildlife access in Colorado means no motorized vehicles. They define motorized vehicles, and they include that in that definition, motorbikes, or, excuse me, motorbikes are included, mountain bikes. So, we who like to mountain bike at Sugar Creek Park have to stop at the Colorado line. We can't go all the way around the lake. We can't go up to Lake Dorothy, and we have respected that. But with this, the end of this lease, that needs to change. Mountain bikes should be allowed on all trails, not just one trail, not just the back of the lake, should be allowed at any area on Lake Dorothy property. This is an economic development issue for the City of Raton. When Fisher's Peak State Park becomes a mountain bike mecca, and it will be as soon as they open it up, Raton cannot afford to lose out on the recreationalist's money that will come in. As I said, outdoor recreation has remained at the top of the economic development issues on every survey. Do not let us lose out and stagnate while Trinidad and Colorado benefit from these monies. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would think, as Commissioner Chatterley spoke a while ago, I believe most everyone on this commission is in favor of doing something than the way it is right now. Yeah, fifty dollars a person, in my opinion, is extremely high. I guess I was breaking the law last summer when I hiked up there with my family. I didn't get caught, but, almost passed out, but didn't get caught. Yeah, like Mr. Berry said, we are in negotiations. They're ongoing, the Outdoor Committee is also part of that. And we want to do something that is right for everybody, mainly our favor. Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, if I may, Commissioner's Mayor, I just wanted to add to what my wife just talked about. I'm also a mountbiker. And I've been stopped on the Colorado side, and Colorado Division of Wildlife has told me, you're going to get a ticket, that's a motorized bike. I said, it's not a motor, my legs are not a motor. Next time I catch you on, you're going to get a ticket. So, those are the, some of the frustration. I've talked to, I've talked to you all about this, and as my wife mentioned, it's, I think it's, it's a shame that we have to get stopped like that. We're just trying to be, stay healthy and get, you know, get some exercise. I'm getting ready to retire July first. I want to be able to mountbike up there. I mean, that's what I do, to stay healthy. I'm not a hiker like she is, but, she likes to hike, I don't like to hike, I rather, I rather mountbike. But the other frustration that I've had as a county commissioner is I've talked to the, to the county manager over in Trinidad many times about the sign that's actually there on the right side, on the east side of the road, of the county road. So, as soon as you come off, you're headed north and you hit the county road, the dirt road, that's a county road. And they have a sign there, the Colorado Division of Wildlife has a sign there that says, you cannot go further, any further unless you have a hunting or fishing license. And I've, I've asked the, the county manager to have them remove that sign. They remove it, they stuck it towards the back of the other sign, and then they take it off completely. I go back up there, I take pictures of it, I call the county manager, they move it back. There is no reason, that's illegal for them to put a sign up like that, in my belief. I'm not an attorney, I haven't asked, my wife, who's an attorney, if that's legal or not, but I've told the county manager, I think that's illegal, you can't do that on a county road. You're blocking access to a county road. And I know there's gates up there, because I've ridden that road on my mountbike with other mountain bikers from here to Trinidad. And we found out, when we got to Trinidad, we forgot our cell phones for her to come and pick us up, so we had to ride back. And that was a long ride, but that is a beautiful ride, to be able to ride your mountbike back and forth. And as long as you close, because those, those gates cannot be locked, and we all know that it's county roads. And I'm all in favor of not closing any county roads, and that's not what the issue is. The issue is that they are stopping people by that sign from going any further on that county road. And I think it's illegal for them to do that, but Colorado Division of Wildlife is, to me, is very stubborn in putting that sign back up. I'm going to, I'm going to contact the county manager again. I talked to him about five weeks ago and said, the sign's back up. They put it back up again. Well, I'll call the Colorado, Colorado Division of Wildlife. It is illegal for them to put that sign up, is what he's told me. So, to me, again, we're just trying to explain to you our frustrations with the Colorado Division of Wildlife, that they stop us as bikers and hikers from going up there. I think my wife is setting up as far as, and we'll have more points, I think, in the coming month or whatever. And I understand, you know, as a committee with the Water Board, I appreciate all the help that, and the work that you all do in putting that stuff together, but at the same time, please remember that, you know, we, as we get older, I'm sixty-six and a half, I want to continue to be able to bike up there. And I want to be able, without the Colorado Division of Wildlife telling me, I'm going to give you a ticket if you continue to ride your bike here. Because it did stop us from the many events that we had there. We had, they had to change the entire route because the Colorado Division of Wildlife was too stubborn to say you cannot ride from here to the street there because it belongs to the state of Colorado, even though it's our property, the City of Raton, and we lease it to them. So, keep that in mind, that we want to use it, we want to be able to use it. And I can tell you that hikers and bikers do not trash. I take, I take apples with me, I take a lot of fruit with me, I don't leave anything behind, in fact, I pick up stuff. All of the mount bikers and hikers, we always pick up the trash. Whether we're fishing at the lake, or we're hiking or biking, we pick up the trash. We want that place to stay clean, and so we appreciate all the help that you can, all the work that you all have done on this, on this issue. But I, I ask you to please, when you look at this lease again, and I, I'm glad to hear it's only a third, what is it, a three, three-year lease?
Three-year lease is what we're anticipating, yes.
Yeah, so I think the twenty-year lease was a long, long lease, but I appreciate that you guys have, apparently negotiated a three-year lease, but, so keep in mind, you know, for those that want to continue to go out there and hike and bike and, and enjoy the weather here, enjoy the wilderness that we have. So, I really appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stafford?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'll just take a couple minutes. I know I'm preaching to the choir here because I want to talk about economic development, and this commission has been better and stronger on economic development than any commission in my thirty-five years in Raton. I know you're taking that into account in what you're doing with negotiation for this lease. In addition to the heads and beds of people who would come here and bike and hike, I think it really, it becomes very likely that we can support a business or two businesses or three businesses on outdoor recreation, and those businesses are not going to come if people can't go up and hike there, if people can't come and mountain bike. So, it's not just heads and beds, I think it's business development as well, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Like I've, I've shared with Mr. Berry and maybe some of the members here in the commission, my goal, or my dream, would us to become the southern entrance to Fisher's State Park, Fisher's Peak State Park. And that would include having an awesome welcome center, opening center, some businesses for mountain biking, fishing. Right now, you go up to the lake and you run out of power, fireballs, you got to drive all the way back to town, you know? So, that's my anticipation. I would love to see, we've talked to the economic development team in Santa Fe, they were encouraged by that and would support us. So, yeah, whatever we can do that would further our development, absolutely, I'm for.
You know, if we keep after the State Wildlife Department, too, because they have talked to us before about building cabins, new campsites, a lot of new stuff up there. But what you're talking about here is, I don't know if you guys remember in nineteen sixty-nine what it was like to go to Lake Malloya? You know, you could, you could hike up to the, there was no restrictions up there at the time. And then when they got a hold of it, I don't know what, what happened, where they got to be bullies, you know, just to keep you out of there. But the, the thing that we're, that I'm, as your commissioner, what I'm, what I'm after is I want to see this, this legislation that they're proposing for us, so that we can achieve what we want up there. And so, be patient with us until we find out that this is a thing, because I don't think this commission here has talked about it a lot, and I don't think anybody's against that. You know, I, that little canyon up there has a special heart for me, so.
All righty. So, you are heard.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Berry, on this subject? Need a motion to postpone, then?
I think we do need a motion to postpone.
I have a motion to postpone, item H, the Lake Dorothy lease agreement between the City of Raton and the Colorado Division of Wildlife until such time that is available. I'll second.
A motion and a second to postpone? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate enact appointment to the Library Board, Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in your packet, you do have the credentials of Joe Rodman. I believe this is a reappointment to the Library Board. You do see Mr. Rodman's qualifications there, requalified, I would say, for your consideration.
I would approve Joe Rodman to be reappointed.
Have a motion and a second to appoint Joe Rodman to the Library Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate enact on bid award for LED lighting retrofit project at Tourist Information Center, Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in general, we are going to spend some time talking about and do some planning on how you want to proceed with the bricks and mortar buildings related to tourism in Raton. And typically, we have funded construction, maintenance, and improvements with our non-promotional lottery tax increment. So, we have particularly been evaluating the Tourist Information Center, that now is more than twenty years old. We're starting to see some wear and tear on the buildings. On that building, there are a number of things that we would intend to bring to the commission, and this really would be the first physical improvement to the building that we've talked about in the current timeframe. What that would consist of is, as the title implies, retrofitting all of the existing lighting and converting that to an LED system, similar to what we did here at City Hall. We have bid that, you do have the bid in your packet, or you have a recommendation for We have bid that. You do have the bid in your packet, or you have a recommendation for award in your packet. We received one bid from N and K Electric. The base bid amount, this is including New Mexico Reserve Tax, six thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Once again, we would go to the non-promotional portion of lodgers tax to fund that. So, you have a recommendation for award, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
I'm sorry. I was out in the wind all day. I have a motion to approve the bid award for LED lighting retrofit project at the Tourist Information Center.
Have a motion and a second to award the bid for the LED project. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on GM emulsion quote for parking lot seal coat projects at City Hall, Raton Senior Center, and the multimodal. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, this would be another, I would term, spring cleaning-type project that staff has worked on. Here, we have contacted this contractor, GM Emulsion, and asked them to look at our City Hall parking lot. You recall that last year, we did crack sealing on the parking lot. If you look at the surface of the parking lot, it's pretty oxidized. This is a system that I really like, the Seal Master PMM system. They've given us a quote for doing the City Hall parking lot. You have that in your packet. It's a little more than twenty thousand dollars. I have provided you a memorandum, and I've asked the commission to consider this, funding this quote, but also funding the Seal Master process at the Cedar Center parking lot and the multimodal parking lot. Those are the asphalt portions of the parking lot. Striping would be involved in that, too, pavement markings. And by my estimate, we could do that work for around thirty thousand dollars. I would ask you for authority to order that work with GM Emulsion, the thirty thousand dollars. Now, GM Emulsion has an existing agreement through the New Mexico General Services Department that allows us to piggyback off of that. So, this is not a bid. This is an extension of a statewide price agreement.
All righty. I was just asked today at the Senior Center if we could get new stripes. Apparently, Mrs., I won't say the name, is taking two spots at once. That's how my day went today.
I don't know if you saw the video of the Seal Master process that I showed you, but we'll make it purty.
Nice.
The video was a nice touch. I enjoyed watching how it works.
But entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the GM emulsion quote for the parking lot seal coat projects at City Hall, the Senior Center, and the multimodal.
A second? And motion and a second to approve the project for the parking lot seal coat project. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-19 for Transportation Project Fund, the TPF, application for chip seal project, and request for match waiver. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, this generally is the time of year when we get a lot of invitations to submit for grant funding. And this is a program that we have been working on. This is a program that's relatively a new source of funding from New Mexico DOT that's available to local government. We did have some success with funding through this program last year. We actually had two large funding requests approved, and that would be the frontage road, the total amount, one point six million dollars, and then Sugar Reed Avenue, one point two million dollars. And the thing we like about this Transportation Project Fund, number one, it will do larger projects. But secondly, there is a five percent local match, as opposed to ninety-five percent state highway funds. And so, the legislature has funded the Transportation Project Fund again this year. There's a lot of money up for grabs in that, and we anticipate submitting this. This is a, we're coming up on the deadline for that. There's a process that is somewhat complicated. We would present this to our Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and then ultimately, a presentation to the district, and then ultimately, it would go to the Highway Commission. So, not a quick process, but I have put together a recommendation for an application to the commission for your consideration. Again, staff has reviewed eligible projects. I think generally, we want it to be in the million-dollar range and really do something meaningful for transportation systems in Raton. We talked about a number of things, but what we came up with, I have a list here of twenty-eight streets in Raton. They range from a residential-type street to a collector-type street, or even an arterial type in here. And if you take the length of these twenty-eight streets, it adds up to more than seven miles a street. I have attached a map, and generally, we have spread this around town. And we proposed to use the chip seal process, really what we did on Fifth Street a couple of years ago. So, that would be two applications, the chip seal and the fog seal. We would plan on doing it on these twenty-eight streets. And I'm recommending this for your consideration, to submit this application for the TPF funding. I think that we could fundamentally really improve Raton streets and go a long way to catching up with the condition of streets. Engineers use the term serviceability, and so, we're losing serviceability on some of these streets. That's at a point where you just have to completely rebuild the street. So, a lot of these have had really no kind of resurfacing or significant maintenance for decades, and we're at that point. And this is the recommendation to really address that issue. Doesn't do all of our streets in town. We have tried to prioritize some of the needier streets here, but I offer the list of the twenty-eight streets to you for your consideration.
All righty, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-19 for Transportation Project Fund, the TPF, application for chip seal project, and request for match.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-19. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-20, Budget Adjustment Number 10, Fiscal Year 22. Michael Ann?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. In your packet this evening, we do have a budget adjustment request for your consideration. You'll see on the General Fund, we're just making line item adjustments, with the exception, I did go ahead and include, in anticipation of your approval this evening, the parking lot seal coat. So, I would be adding thirty thousand to that line item to cover those estimated costs. And that would come from your General Fund reserve balance. In addition, I am asking to request the three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars out of the General Fund, and that would go towards our electric vehicle charging station project, which is now complete and fully functional. I've actually seen a couple cars down there myself. So, I think there's a couple different websites where that specific address is listed, and so, people that have electric vehicles can easily find it, probably through an app or a website. New Mexico State Tourism also, Jolene Green had contacted them and got that address added to their site as well. So, other than that, at a previous meeting, we did get approved for the NMFA loan to purchase the two pieces of fire equipment. So, we will be proceeding with the loan documents. I actually received a draft of those today, and we'll be bringing that to you at the next commission meeting. But we are going to add the line item adjustment for the bond proceeds for that loan, which was nine hundred and three thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. And then, we also have a small county grant that we get from Colfax County for EMS. I had budgeted at twenty-five hundred dollars, but we received two thousand seven hundred and fifty. So, we'll make that small adjustment there as well. Other than that, just a small line item adjustment in the sanitation. Is there any questions?
I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-20, Budget Adjustment Number 10, Fiscal Year 22.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-20. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, city manager report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, I did attend the monthly meeting of the Schuler Restoration Commission. We met with the group. Similar to what we talked about with the Tourist Information Center, we are considering all the buildings that might, we might apply non-promotional lodgers tax to. So, we had a discussion of potential improvements at the Schuler. We also reviewed the memorandum of understanding between the city and Schuler Restoration. They gave us a schedule for twenty-two upcoming, especially in the summer, a really busy time. It's one of our really good partnerships with this group. And I did ask Jolene Green to attend the meeting with me, and she will serve as our liaison to a lot of the not-for-profits and even other groups, for-profit groups, that we would deal with on these remote facilities. So, good meeting there. We will report back to you with some proposed revisions to the memorandum of understanding between the parties, things that have evolved over the years. So, before we get complete with the budget, we'll probably be talking about that again. I did talk to Chief Burke from the Fire Department today. We are very concerned about dangerous fire conditions through the area. Chief Burke had talked to the Colfax County Group Rapid Response and their emergency manager. And we concurred with Colfax County in their proposal to implement a burn ban in certain parts of the county. And those certain parts would include the areas surrounding Raton, and really, eastern Colfax County, especially in close proximity to the city. There are several out-of-control fires in New Mexico right now. We've got very windy conditions. And so, just to let you know, and the public know, we have dangerous conditions. It's really early in the year to be talking about wildfire, but yet, Colorado has experienced that. There are some, there's a new fire today in New Mexico. There's a fire that really concerns us in the Watrous, Las Vegas area, that's blowing up. And we have dangerous conditions out there. So, we did concur with the burn ban. Representative Roger Montoya has organized the Bipartisan Rural Summit. And you all have some information on your desk. That includes an agenda for the Bipartisan Rural Summit. He has set that up to take place on May 12th and 13th. That would be in Santa Fe at the Roundhouse. The intent of this is for discussion of rural issues regarding infrastructure, education, public safety, economic development, and other things that are of interest to rural government. I plan to attend the Rural Summit for commissioners. If you do plan to attend, we can talk about registration for you. There is no cost, but just to let them know that we're coming. So, you have about a month to consider that. I will be going and representing Raton. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I will be at my granddaughter's wedding that weekend, so I won't be attending.
I possibly could.
All right. Item O, closed executive session pursuant to Section 10-15-1. H, pending litigation, City of Raton versus Mark Van Busskerd. Cause number D-809-CV-2013-00245. Need a motion to go into closed session? We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call vote, please, Desiree.
Sure. Mayor Segata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro temp Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Thank you. Reconvene in about five minutes? We can reconvene while Mr. Mayfield is getting his equipment.